Good morning, everyone, and welcome to this Perth County Council meeting for Thursday, April the 3rd. I am Warden Dr. Kellum, and I officially call this meeting for the clerk to note the starting time at 9:00 AM. We do have regrets this morning from Councillor Matt Duncan, and joining us via Zoom is Councillor Kasonberg. Welcome, Councillor Kasonberg. It's time, I'd like you to bow your heads for a moment of reflection. Thank you. We acknowledge that Perth County is situated on the traditional land of the Anishinaabe, and have longstanding relationships with the land and water throughout the region. We honor and respect the history, languages, and culture of the diverse indigenous, Métis, Inuit people who call this territory home. As a county, we have a responsibility for reconciliation and continued stewardship on the land on which we live and work. Does anyone have any peculiar interest to declare at this time? Seeing none, if so does arise, please do so anytime throughout the meeting. With nonconfirmation of the agenda, are there any additions to the agenda?
Through the warden, we have one addition to item 14.1, which is closed item, and it is a matter pertaining to text litigation negotiations. We have verbal update under CAO.
Thank you, Clerk. Anyone else? Seeing none, have motion that reads that the April 3rd, 2025 agenda be approved as amended. Move by. Councillor McDermott, seconded by Councillor Aggins. All those in favor? Night is carried. For now, the consent agenda, there are 14 items, I believe, on the agenda. Is there anything, any councillor wishes to add? Councillor Orr.
I'd like to support 6.7, and I was filed with my first for the removal of the interprovincial trade barriers.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anyone else? Seeing none. Sue?
I just think it's logical to gather together and support all of our businesses, and I feel a lot of municipalities are going through, and the letter was well-written by my first, so I would hope that we can support that.
Perfect. So removing that?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Who has a second, or? By Councillor Wilhelm. Questions or comments on this? Seeing none. All those in favor? Well, sorry.
Yeah. Deputy Trenkowski. Through you, Warden Kellum. Fully agree with Councillor Orr's proposal. Just wanted to emphasize the importance of removing interprovincial trade barriers when it comes to agricultural activities, as well as what was noted in the letter regarding small business, medium-sized businesses which prevailed through the county. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Anyone else? Seeing none. I have a motion that reads as follows: The council receives the consent agenda, items 6.1 to 6.14, excluding 6.7, and approves the March 20th, '25 council minutes. Do we mean to move on without? I am sorry. Thank you, Frank. So we'll go back to that. But Councillor Orr, by Councillor Wilhelm, thank you. All those in favor? Night is carried. Late night. Now, we'll read the second ones. The council receives the consent agenda, items 6.1 to 6.14, excluding 6.7, and approves the March 20th, '25 council minutes. Move by. Councillor Kasonberg, seconded by Councillor McDermott. All those in favor? Night is carried. Public meetings, hearings, or delegations. So we'll move into staff reports. We'll start off with the 2024 annual report, and I believe Sarah is going to present. Welcome, Sarah.
Thank you. Morning, Warden Kellum, and members of county council. I'm pleased to be here today to present the 2024 annual report for information for you this morning. This annual report is the fourth edition, designed and produced by the county, and is a summarized document containing highlights of some of the major initiatives undertaken by county staff last year. The items are submitted by division managers, and then categorized, consolidated, and organized into the five goals of the corporate strategic plan: growth and economic development, regionalization and service effectiveness, customer service excellence, community development and planning, and corporate sustainability. The annual report is an important tool to help educate the public about our municipal operations, service delivery, and strategic priorities. While the report covers a lot of ground, it's not intended to be a comprehensive list of everything that we do, all of our recurring programs, or the work that the county has completed throughout the year, but instead highlights the major initiatives and showcases how our county team works together to deliver programs and services and achieve the goals of the corporate strategic plan. Each division works hard throughout the year to contribute to these accomplishments, both those divisions that are more visible or public-facing, as well as those divisions who are considered more the wiring behind the walls and provide critical internal support to everyone. The annual report is an excellent way to celebrate these achievements of the entire organization. So following the meeting, this report that you see in your council packages will be posted to the county's website and promoted to staff and the public through social media. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Sarah. Counsel, any questions or comments for Sarah? Councillor Orr.
Yes, great report. I love how you put it all together. Wondering on, I have it as page 58, but it's under customer service excellence. How, can you talk about the coyote information in the reporting portal? Is it effective, or how is that going?
Absolutely. Thank you, Councillor Orr, for the question. Through the warden, in the first six months of launching that form, we've had 64 submissions. That's 64 individual reports in the first six months. I took a look at the data, and the average sighting is roughly two coyotes per sighting, with a total number reported of 143. Now, that could be multiple people reporting the same coyote, so. There is a plan as well to bring back a report in November of 2025, so that will give us a full year of data since the form has launched, but if you ever would like any further updates, I'd be happy to provide them.
Just curious if, do we keep the data on where the sightings are? Like, are they in cities, or?
So, through the warden, the data is geotagged through our GIS Survey 123 system, so we do have the ability to map the rough zones where these are observed. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none. Thank you, Sarah. Have motion that reads as follows: The council receives the 2024 annual report for information. Move by. Councillor Smith, seconded by Councillor McKenzie. All those in favor? Night is carried. Thanks again, Sarah. Moving on to corporate services, February 2025 Forestry Inspector's Report. Tyler?
Great, thank you. So through the warden, for council is the February 2025 Forestry Inspector's Report, prepared by Marvin Smith, the Perth County Forestry Inspector. Within the month of February, Marvin completed nine inspections in response to the submission of the last 10, and there are no issues noted. Happy to take any questions, comments, or concerns. Russell, why don't you, Marvin?
Tyler? Questions or comments for Tyler? Seeing none. Have motion that reads as follows: The council receives the February 2025 Forestry Inspector's Report for information. Move by. Councillor Wilhelm, seconded by Councillor Aggins. All those in favor? Night is carried. Moving on to paramedic services. Luke Mike is doing this report. Welcome, Mike.
Thank you. I'm through the warden. I am presenting on behalf of D.C. Chris Keizer today. The, just informing council's reports with respect to an application that we're putting in for grant funding for equipment that can help us to train paramedics, and also that can be used in our emergency operations, through emergency management program, and also through paramedic services to expand the number of radios that we have for our region, and also for some simulation equipment. So, report is before you. If you have any questions, I'd be happy and pleased to answer.
Right. Questions or comments for Mike at this time? Councillor Wilhelm?
This, less than equipment, et cetera, would only be purchased if you received the grant funding?
Correct. Okay, good. Thanks. Anyone else? Seeing none. Motion that reads: The council receives the paramedic services and emergency management grant submission equipment. Report for information. Move by. Councillor Orr, seconded by Councillor McDermott. All those in favor? Night is carried. Thanks, Mike. Moving on to the agenda, public work, road rationalization study, and I believe John will introduce coming up. Thank you, Warden Kellum.
County roads are a credit to the economic development and vitality of the county, larger urban centers within our boundaries, and rural areas alike. Morning, council. Phil Wilson and I would like to introduce David Perks and Matthew Buttram from Tatham Engineering Limited. Tatham was pertaining to complete Phase 1, the rationalization study, as the first step in rightsizing the county road network. Road rationalization is a two-phase process, with the first phase, road rationalization study, being presented today. Rationalization study identifies the most appropriate county transportation network, intending to assign ownership and responsibility of roads to the most appropriate municipal authority. The reports and presentation today are intended to better inform council of the road rationalization process, review the analysis and results of Phase 1, and understand the recommendations being made. To date, council is not being asked to approve any of the recommendations or move forward with the process at this time. You will be receiving the study as information, and that's because you don't have the full picture. That picture gets painted in Phase 2 of the process, the implementation study. This is where the rubber hits the road, and studies the financial impacts of the recommendations, considers condition and attributes of assets, and develops a strategy for implementation. Road rationalization is not an overnight process. County roads are considered primary travel corridors to provide the efficient movement of traffic throughout. County road network should provide connectivity between the county settlement areas, larger urban centers, and rural areas alike. County roads support associated residential and commercial activities, and as stated before, are critical to the economic development and vitality of the county. Unfortunately, many municipalities across the province are faced with diminishing resources to effectively maintain their road networks and assets. The goal of road rationalization is to focus available resources and invest them wisely, ensuring they serve a purpose in the overall objectives of the county road network. You don't want to misuse available funds by maintaining assets which provide redundant or incomplete service. Phase 1 of the road rationalization process involves a systematic review comprised of three steps: a criteria-based assessment, principle-based assessment, and special considerations review. The staff report before you today provides a high-level summary of the consultant's report, and before I turn it over to David and Tatham, the next steps in this process is to present this at each local municipality, gather feedback and comments, and then we'll be reporting back to council later on this year. With that, I'll turn it over to David Perks, Tatham Engineering.
Welcome, David.
Thank you. Thank you, John. So we're going to go, we'll go through our, the presentation here on the road rationalization plan, take you through the process in, that we went through to come up with this recommended road network. Intended today is not to go through how we assessed every road. We'll be here forever, but we'll go through how we've come up with it, the rationale, the methodology, and then at the end, if there's any questions specific to a new road that you want to speak about, then we can speak to that. But we'll get started with just taking you through how this process, how we went through this process, and what we've done for other communities as well. So the idea of the rationalization study, and why we do it, is, as John also alluded to, is that county roads, there's finite services or resources available to maintain a county road system, or a municipal road system, or even the provincial road system. So if we don't have, if we aren't, don't have this, our road network rightsized, where it's actually serving the right purpose, we're spending money maintaining roads that, where that money could be allocated elsewhere, that would help your road network serve the purpose that it's intended to. So if we don't properly maintain a county road, because we don't have the resources to, or if it's not, the money's not being spent where it's needed most, the road network is going to deteriorate, and in the end, that has big impacts on the economic vitality of your county, of its municipalities, because the road network is how people get to work, it's how goods get to and from your communities, it's an integral. So the county road system, the first portion of this is, you have to identify what is the purpose of our county roads. So that's where this all comes together with the study purpose, is to identify what's your road network, what's the purpose of this road network, and understanding that there is a finite amount of resources to maintain these roads. So you don't want to be maintaining roads that aren't serving the purpose, that aren't helping with the county in terms of its growth, its economic growth, which again benefits the municipalities. So the resources that we have must be used efficiently, and that's the purpose of this road rationalization program, is to right-size, is one of the terms we use, right-size your Speaking to that slide. So our study objectives. So step one, you need to confirm which roads should be county roads. So in order to do that, you have to identify what is the purpose of the county road versus what's the purpose of a municipal road or a local road. Once you've done that, you, one of the objectives is to ensure appropriate accountability to the road users, to make sure that the roads are being maintained properly, that in order to do that, you need to identify, again, the purpose of the roads, maintain them to that purpose, so they are serving what they're intended to serve. And then, of course, when you rationalize, the rationalization of your road network, you apply appropriate standards for the appropriate roads. So county is maintaining county road to a county standard. Municipalities can maintain municipal roads, local roads, to a local standard, because those standards are different. And they, if you're applying county standards to a municipal road, or a road that should be municipal, you're overbuilding your road, you're over, you're building into a purpose that is not intended to serve. And then it's, again, to facilitate the smart, focused spending of your county funds. So we're going to identify this road network, and then that allows funds that are there to maintain your road network, to be spent on those appropriate roads. So the role of the county road, so that's the first step. What is your county road for? County roads are arterial roads. You also have, within your, within the county, you have the upper-tier road, the provincial highway system, you know, a couple highways running through 823. So those are sort of the upper, they are intended to convey all types of traffic and just getting people through. That's the intent of a highway. Your county road is similar. It's intended to convey high volumes of vehicle, all, again, of vehicle, vehicle trips, all types, trip purposes. It is considered an arterial road, so they're not, a county road isn't intended to provide access to land. It's not supposed to, that's not the intent, that's more of a local road. A county road will accommodate longer distance travel, so it's getting people through the county, connecting the county within. Again, moving goods through as well, making sure that appropriate areas, municipalities are connected. See in the diagram here, it gives you an idea of what you've got with your increasing mobility. So the higher, higher-tier road, provincial, county, there's more of a focus on moving, moving goods and moving people, rather than getting access to you like a residential driveway, or a driveway to commercial. Those tend to come off a collector road, or a local road, which would be municipal in, in terms of hierarchy. So your county road, again, high volume, typically at higher speeds, accommodating longer distance travel through the county, connecting to counties outside. You want to be able to get goods and services, people into and through your county with ease. And again, those roads will connect to those lower-tier roads, which again provides the local street, the local access, and the things that would be more municipal, of municipal Now, the road rationalization study, this is where the county gets the authority to do this, to rationalize the road network and to upload or transfer the road network. So under Section 52 of the Municipal Act, the Perth County has the power to establish the road network, to maintain and to add or remove designated roads to or from their county road system. So that's where you get the context of what the rationalization study is, is the theme and the sort of the framework for it. So we did our, our, when we started our review, we started with a background review, and we've done these, these rationalization plans for Dufferd County, we worked on it for Gray County, we're doing it for the District of Muscoca as well. So we had those ones in mind. We also started with the Ontario Goods and Road Association. They have 12 criteria for road rationalization, and that sort of, it starts, it's a starting point for us. The thing is, every county's different, so it's, it's hard to just take one set of criteria and just apply it to the county. So we looked at these other counties as well, what was applied in them, what criteria did they use, and so we, it was sort of a broader scope in terms of, yes, we have the Ontario Goods and Roads Association, their recommendations, that's a good start, but what else have other counties done to sort of create a homegrown set of criteria that sort of suits the county? We did the same thing for Perth, so we went through, we gathered all of these, all the criteria that were applied for all these different counties, and then we looked at them in context of Perth County, and we pulled the ones that were appropriate, and we removed the ones that maybe didn't have, have a purpose for what we were doing, or the county, you know, didn't have, for instance, Gray County, or there are some that, Central County, that where they have a high, high recreational area, like Gray County has Blue Mountain, and so that, that would be something that they want to make sure the county road can serve. You don't have a big place maker here, so that service to a recreational area isn't a criteria that you would use. So we would do, we sorted through that, where what criteria were good for the county, and which ones were not applicable. So through that, we identified eight criteria, which we'll walk through, to do the, to do the criteria assessment. Now, the whole road rationalization, it's a multi-step process. It's one thing to have the criteria and apply them to the road network, but the way we have to do it is, we have to break the road network down into sections, because a long road section will have different characteristics, speed limits, whether the volumes are different, serving different areas. So we can't apply the criteria to an entire road. We have to break it into sections. So the issue with doing that, I mean, one, one thing is, it's easier to apply the criteria, but what happens with the step one criteria assessment is that you end up with gaps in your road network, where it's dropping a section, picking up a section. So that needs to be addressed through, through a second step, a second step, which is what we call our principal assessment. So the criteria sort of looks very specifically at the characteristics of the road. It's, it's more of a quantitative, I would say, like, because you're looking at traffic volumes, you're looking at, are there heavy, heavy vehicles on there? So it's a little more quantitative, where the principal assessment, you take a step back, you are a little higher up, you're looking at the whole road network, that's where you start looking at where are the gaps, what did the criteria assessment say? You look at the, you take a step forward away, so you can see where the connections are, and how your road is laid out, and then you, so you assess it based on the principal assessment as well. The criteria, points are awarded based on different thresholds in each criteria, so if it was, for instance, let's say, traffic volume, if it was, if that road carried more than, say, 5,000 vehicles a day and got a certain set of points, if it was less, then there, it sort of came down with fewer points. The principal assessment is more of a yes/no. Does it provide north-south service, yes or no? Does it provide? So it's a little different how that's applied. So here are our criteria, the first criteria, we, now, we're not taking through all the criteria, it's in the report. The report identifies all the OGRA criteria, and then identifies some of the criteria that the other counties applied, and then what Perth County, what we've applied to Perth County. So we're going to take you through the ones that we applied for Perth County. The first one is upper-tier, sorry, urban center or upper-tier connector. So, road, a county road needs to provide connectivity, or should provide connectivity, between your urban centers. So if you have Listowel North, and you have to come down to St. Mary's, or how it's segregated, but it's, that is a big connector, there should be connection between them, or between some of the serviced urban areas, we have listed here, this is restricted from the official plan, and this is how we've, in the villages. So if there's connections between these, and we are considering critical, they would get a point for that. We have, or if it's, or if the road is connecting an urban center to provincial highway. The intent of the urban center connector is not to connect a county road to a county road, it's to connect the urban centers, or the, where you have your unemployment, where you have your population, and make sure that they're connected to the wider road network. It's not intended, if you have a pocket that shows up where you've got a few houses on a strip of road, or a small subdivision, that's not the intent. It's more for your, your actual urban centers that have been defined. Now, down the road, so you have subdivision built somewhere, and it actually starts building out into a community that's been identified, then you consider that. But in this case, we've taken what's already existing within the county, and we've got stratified as urban centers, serviced urban areas, and villages. And so if it's connecting an urban center or a serviced urban area, it gets a higher score. If it's connecting the villages, it's a lower score. So these are two different criteria, so you have heavy service, heavy industry service, so anything that's servicing, anything that would generate heavy vehicles in your county road system, county roads are built to carry all types of traffic, so, so heavy trucks. Now, I said I know that there are some that have, have load restrictions, but the intent here is that if it's, if it's servicing a heavy industry, then you have the high volume, or a vault, some volume of heavy trucks, then they would score points for that. It's not to say that that was the only thing it was serving, that it would be a county road, but that's one portion. So we're looking at eight criteria, so heavy industry service scores points. Area service, it's not a huge an issue in Perth County, but, so a barrier would be if there's something that's preventing people from, from traffic from crossing, so Tavon or Thames River, rivers. So if they were, there's, you have traffic from one side to the other, and there's one ridge, that's considered a critical infrastructure, that you have people across the road that that's on, perhaps should be a county road, or should receive points. I shouldn't say it's I shouldn't say it shouldn't be a county road, but should receive points for having that. So, or if it runs parallel and provides service, parallel to a barrier until the point where it can be crossed, then it would receive points for that, providing a barrier service. So that's just an idea of, if there's anything that's severing your county and you need to get people from one side to the other, and it's important too, because it's, you know, you have populations or you have services on either side, then that needs to be considered. Traffic speed, again, county roads typically have a higher, higher traffic speed because of the idea of moving traffic. It's, I think most counties are, those are 80 kilometers, I'm sure there's others, but that's, that's the idea of that, is that you've, you've got, you don't want lower speed roads that are within small municipalities or small, small built up areas that, that aren't intended to move traffic. The speed limit is again, it's for mobility. And then traffic volume, that one is, identifies roads that are conveying a lot of traffic. If you have a road that's conveying hundreds of vehicles a day, then perhaps that's something that should be in the county network because it's a very small amount of traffic. But higher volume roads, obviously intended, again, in the context of what a county road is and that it's intended to convey high volume of traffic, that becomes an important criteria to consider. Other criteria have, so continues within Perth County. So that is internal connection. So if it's, it's providing a service from the south to the north or east to the west, then that should serve certain points if it's providing continuous because it has the potential to serve a high function. Occasionally, you might have roads that aren't quite continuous because they stop and they jog, in which case then we have to start looking and it comes into the principal side of things where you start looking at the corridor rather than the individual road. But if it's providing some sort of continuous service through the county, then it's getting awarded points. And then continues beyond Perth County. That's again important because the county road also serves to get people in and out of the county because you want people coming in and you want to be able to get your goods out and people out to work. So you want to look at the county, you can't look at the county in isolation. What are our neighbors doing? The neighbors have roads that are connecting, they're connecting at our borders. Is our county road connecting up the same road? So there's a continuation of our county road over to the adjacent, where the county road is being picked up by the adjacent county. So it gets awarded points for that as well. Urban bypass, so these are roads that provide relief of urban congestion. So what you'll see in other counties, Central County's done it in a few places where they've, they've transferred, MTO has done it with some of their highways, where they transfer it, they use a connecting link agreement through an urban area. Because a county road going through an urban center or a highway going through an urban center is, they've got two very different purposes. County road, again, to move people going through an urban area. You want access to land, you want people to be able to get in and out to businesses, access to businesses. So they kind of contradict those two, those two functions. So in cases where you can provide a bypass or if a road is serving as a bypass, that's the key, is if it's already in this, when we look at it, we look at the traffic volumes, you can sometimes tell, this is a local road network and it's serving a lot of traffic and we can identify by, based on the route it's going, that it's being used as a bypass. They're getting around the urban center. So if there are roads that are providing relief to urban congestion, then there are points, there are points awarded for that as well. So those are the eight criteria. They're summarized here and these are the points that we have assigned them. So if it connects to a, so for the first one, urban center, upper tier. So again, if it's, if it's connecting to something, one of your serviced urban areas or the urban area, or St. Mary's, it's getting a four. If it's connected to a village, you get a point two. If it's connected to anything other than that, then it's a, if it's not connecting to a village or service, then it gets a zero. Heavy industry service is just based, I think the thresholds are provided in the report. That's just based on the number of vehicles. So there's just a couple of thresholds. If it's over, I can't recall the exact threshold, but it's either getting a zero or two. Barrier service, again, you don't have a lot of barriers within the county, so it gets a relatively low score, it's not as important. Traffic speed, it's either a zero or one, it's either 80 kilometers or you're not. So it's getting a zero or one. Traffic volume, zero to five, now that's, that's, actually there's a sliding scale in there as well. So with each threshold of volume, 1,000, 2,000, that's average daily volume, it gets scored with additional points. If it continues within Perth, it either gets two for providing continuity or it's a zero for not. And then same with continuing beyond Perth. If it's hitting your border, but there's not a, there's not a county road continuing out the other side, it would get, we get a zero, but if there is, it would get a two. And then if it's serving a bypass route, then it will get a one. If it's not, then it gets a zero. So if they were just, if a road was to score top on every one of those, you'd get an max score of 17.5. And we have to identify where the threshold is, where, what's the points to get over, where we would start to consider it as county road, based on the criteria. And the threshold we've selected is six points. If it's greater than or equal to six points, which is pretty much consistent across OGR, I believe six, or some of them went seven, but six or seven points depending on the criteria you pick. So that threshold has been set. And when we set that, we were looking at what the results were. Because if you go too high, all of a sudden you don't have a county road network because everything drops. If you go too low, then nothing goes the other way. So we have an idea of what the results in terms of what we've seen before. And we understand that at the start, this criteria assessment on its own, it can be a little bit of a jaw dropper. But that six points is fairly consistent with other municipalities and/or with other counties that we've applied and with OGR. So after the step one, after, I mean, the principal, a more principal approach was this is where we get into our yes and no. And this, again, it's just stepping a little bit, you're in the weeds when you do the criteria. You're looking at road sections. Now we step back and we do same thing with the road, but now we're looking at, does it provide north-south service? Does it provide east-west service? North-south would be throughout the county, not just a section. Oh yeah, it's a north-south road, it's to connect it throughout, east-west. Does it complement the provincial highway system? So that's, is it providing access to the provincial highways? It's not that it's, you know, if you have a county road on either side of a provincial highway and they're both running parallel to it and within a reasonable distance or a close distance, that would be considered redundant. That's not what we mean by complementing the provincial system. It's how it's helping people get to the roads, get to the provincial highway system. A county road should be direct, succinct and intuitive. So it's not, it's not broken up, it's not, it's just easily to look, so to see, here's our road network, it makes sense, it's grid-like in this case. And the county already is fairly, fairly grid. Now, it does jog a bit based on concession lines and things, but it's, it is a fairly straightforward road system. So the county roads should be direct, succinct and it should be intuitive. Again, a high degree of connectivity, there shouldn't be any breaks in it. County road should provide the shortest practical route. So it shouldn't be a roundabout way of getting through or a meandering road that's, people are going for, let's go for a Sunday drive. It should be a short, practical route, that's shortest distance. When we look at traffic and getting people from point A to point B, time is always a big consideration. It doesn't provide redundant or parallel service. And this is why I'm speaking to you with complementing the provincial highway service or highway system. A county road not only should not be redundant or parallel to a highway, it shouldn't be parallel or redundant to another county road. So if you have two county roads that are side by side, you're basically splitting the service that they're providing. Say, one of them, if you could provide the same level of service, even better level of service because you could put your resources into one rather than two, then that should be considered. If it's providing redundant, then that's a strength against it. So if it's not providing redundant, then that means that it's, hey, it's required and there's nothing else around that's providing that service. Again, does not extend to urban downtown area. So you don't want your county roads going through the downtowns again because downtown has a very local, a local purpose rather than county road purpose. And it should be capable of being improved and/or maintained. That's just a matter of, because the roads, county road is, it's built to a higher standard because of the type of volumes that it has to carry. So if a road is going to cost a lot of money or it requires a lot of upkeep to get to a county and maintain as a county road, then that should perhaps not be, you know, that's something to be considered. So with respect to the county, the road rationalization principles, each road was assessed based on achieving it. So it's a yes or no. Does it provide redundant service, yes or no? Is it providing, is it providing good connectivity as a complement to any of the highway system? Yes, no? And so to be considered for a county road in this step, it would have to reach five of the eight principles to be satisfied in order to be considered for, to be maintained in the county road network. So your county road system, currently there's 39 county roads, 89 road sections. This is what we used in the assessment. We broke them into road sections to make that assessment in terms of the criteria easier. And I believe it follows the road rational, or road needs study, the recap of roads that we had in that. So it's consistent with the other reports that you had done for that, for the road system. And it's totaling 496 kilometers. In addition to that, to the actual existing county road network, we also, county requested that municipalities provide roads that they would like considered in the road rationalization because it is a two-way street. We also look at what roads are not in our system that would be beneficial to be in our system. How would they help? So these are the roads, the roads throughout, there's 11 roads, 14 sections where we broke them up for 78 kilometers. And this is a little list of them, they're detailed in the report. Most of them up towards the north, there's a few down the south. And so these roads went through the exact same criteria assessment that we did with the county road system. So do we have, everybody has maps in front of them that were provided and it shows you, the maps show how progression of the road, of the rationalization. So if we look at, I don't know if I have that slide up here. So the existing road. So these are broken up a little bit compared to what's in the report. The first slide that we have, the first map is just your existing road network, which, yeah, it shows your, all the county roads and then it also has your provincial highways as well. Second one that we did was just the criteria, or sorry, we combined the steps one and two. So the reason we did this, I think in the report, we have them separated. We have step one and step two. Do you look at step one on its own? It, like I said, it's a lot of roads drop, a bit of a discontinuous road network. That's because it's just that step one, it's looking at road sections. And then when we look at the second, the second principle assessment, then it starts bringing roads back into the road system. In step one, with the criteria assessment, there were 22 road sections that actually, of the 89, 22 of them didn't meet the criteria. So that is about 137 kilometers or 28% of the road system. So that's a lot, that's, that's breaking your road system, that's fixing it. So that, but it gives us the starting point of what roads may be important to keep and which would go down. So then when we applied the principal assessment, what happens is only 11 roads, or 11 road sections of the 89, which were 40 kilometers, don't meet the criteria. So that map, step one and two, is showing anything that was, anything that was to be maintained as a, as a county road, whether it was to be maintained under step one or step two, is showing as maintained. And anything that hit as not meeting the criteria, it should be transferred. It should be shown to be transferred down. It doesn't show up very well on this slide, but, and then the same thing with the local roads are in there. So when we did the criteria assessment for the local roads, there were three local road sections that were to be considered as county roads. And then the principal, there were eight local road sections. So there's a big difference in when you look at the two. So we can look at those maps, we go through them or if there's any questions after the presentation on individual road sections, then we can, we can review and we can answer some questions on those. The third map is the last step in the rationalization process. We've gone through the numbers, we've gone through the principal, and now we look at it. We finally say, okay, now this is what our road network is looking based on these first two, but is there anything in the road network? And this is where county staff comes into play because they know, they know the small or integral things that a road section might be providing that as a consultant company doesn't know. So we discuss that, we find it, we look at the road network and say, yes, this one is identified to be downloaded, but it provides this service that maybe is not catching all the others, but this, it's providing this specific service and that's important and we need to maintain that. And so we hold that, and so we recommend that stays in the county road. Or the other side, it's like, you know, it's funny, that's that, that one looks like it could be, we don't need that one because we've got this and this, and this is a road that's not required. So that final step is kind of crucial, crucial in terms of pulling everything together to come up with our final, our final recommended road network. And that's, yeah, that would be the final, the final map there. Now, if we go back to the presentation. So those were the maps, again, they're in the report, right? They're in front of you as a, you, the legend there, it shows which ones are uploading and downloading or be recommended for. And just here's a summary of the steps that we went through. So step one, again, 22 road sections do not meet the criteria of the county road, which is 28% of the road system, where there are three local roads that we reviewed that were, were meeting that criteria. When we applied the principal assessment, we see that the number that don't meet the criteria drops to 11. And then the local roads that, that sort of meet that criteria are increased to eight. Now then, we can look at that final step, which we go in and look at this, we consider it special in situations just to make sure we're not missing anything. Find that there are five road sections that are currently county roads. Find that there are five road sections that are currently county roads that do not meet the criteria or satisfy the principles of for county roads. And these are the road sections here that we mentioned. So Perth line 56A, Perth line 88A, Perth line 147. There's two sections of road there, and Perth road 151. Now, when we review this, we, in applying sort of a county specific, what are these road sections, we're in the road network now. What are they providing that might be missing? 56A, it's just a small piece, but it, the service that it's providing is of convenience for specifically for moving large vehicles because of the way that the alignment of the intersection is. At 56, it, 56A provides an easier way for vehicles, especially commercial vehicles, to make those maneuvers through the road network. So that's important to maintain that within the county road network. And then county road 147, that one we maintained, even though it didn't score, it provides very important north-south service within the county. So that one was also decided, it's not meeting the principle, we're going to hold on to them. And then with respect to the local roads, we found that two local roads meet and satisfy principles for county roads. So one of the issues with, when we looked at some of the local roads, they were either providing service that was very close to either a highway or close to another county road, especially in and around Stratford area. There's a lot of county roads and there's highway system coming through there. There's a lot of redundancy, so it just didn't make sense to bring them, to bring them into the county road network to add more county roads in an area that already is saturated with them. So we didn't want to, it was introducing, introducing parallel or redundant service. So some of those did it. But we did identify Lorne Avenue, Old Lorne Avenue in and around the limits because they provided some additional connectivity and they also serve a high volume of traffic. And the Whelan line on the southwest or south end of the county, because we have a county road to the, to the north, north, northwest of it. So that actually just completes, and it's a boundary road. It completes, extends an existing county road. So it serves a lot of traffic. So it was recommended to upload or transfer Whelan line to, to the county. Again, if there's any specific questions to this, we can address those shortly now. One thing that we know, we wanted to speak on is Listowel. We understand that a lot of roads were recommended to look at in that area with respect to a potential bypass. We understand that there's, there is a county road that runs through it and the highway as well. So it's, it is a, congestion is a bit of an issue. Or it's becoming an issue for, for Listowel. So we know the North, the North Port TMT identified the need for a bypass. And we looked at many local roads in the area that might be serving that. Based on our review of it, couldn't recommend that they be transferred at this time. Just there's not enough information on it. So a bypass, we would recommend that more detailed study be completed prior to recommending those roads because you want to get the bypass right. You want to make sure it's one that's going to be used. If we go through this process without that extra detail, we can recommend a bypass that doesn't get used. And that's not the intent of that. We want to make sure that appropriate bypass is recommended. And for that, there's a, there's a study that can happen that tracks vehicles through the area and finds out travel patterns. So those roads can be identified because there are options around Listowel where are different road options. You just want to make sure you get the one where most traffic is going to use. You don't want to identify and upload roads to the county network for the purpose of a bypass that doesn't get used because then it just brought in road network that's not, and it's not serving Listowel either. You want to make sure that it's appropriate for Listowel that they get the best, the best impact from a bypass being implemented. So it's not that it's not needed. It's just that we don't have the information available to, to recommend it, a specific bypass of Listowel. So it's something that we recommend should be kept on the table in terms of future study or something a little more detailed. So it can recommend a route. And then at that point, it could be discussed as to how that's going to be worked on at the county. I just wanted to make sure, I just wanted to touch on that to make sure that everyone knows it was, it was considered. We did look at it. We didn't just hand wave it. We looked at if it was possible, do we have enough information to confidently recommend a viable bypass that's going to serve Listowel? So in a summary, for the road rationalization portion of the 496 kilometers that you currently have, 488 were identified to be maintained. And that's a good thing. That means you have a road network that's fairly, that's fairly, you know, rational already. And you can tell it is fairly grid-like. There is some redundancy in places, but there are reasons for it. But overall, it's, it's eight, sorry, there is, yeah, 80 kilometers that were recommended to transfer to the municipality for, so it's, it's not a huge impact to the road network. And in terms of the transferring from the other direction, from the county to the municipality, Perth line 88, it's a very small gravel segment at the north end that's 300 meters of road for transfer. It's not really serving a county purpose. And then Perth road 151 in the south. It's a north-south road, but it's providing, it's not connecting anything. We spoke a little bit about at the start where we talked about urban connectivity and connecting to the road network. County road that just connects county road to a county road isn't really serving county road service. So 151 had the highway to the west or south, or sorry, north, northwest, and then it had other county roads to the, to the south. So it's, and it is not connecting to anything, not connecting to an urban center. So it was, it was ultimately recommended for transfer. And then the roads in and around Perth South, Whelan line, which we spoke about, and the Lorne Avenue, Old Lorne, which are on that, providing connection on the west end of this Stratford. So here's the road rationalization summary altogether for the municipalities. So you see that West Perth, West Perth and Perth East didn't identify any roads for consideration, so it was not looked at. And then the rest of what was for Perth East. So next steps, John Todd, briefly about this at the start. The first step is to take the road rationalization study findings to the local municipalities, solicit their feedback. It would basically be this presentation, but perhaps especially for north end and south coast. Holding in on the roads that, provide an additional description on the roads that were considered within their municipalities. Compile the municipal, municipality feedback and then provide that information some way to the county council. And then of course, seeking approval to undertake phase two. So phase two, and we'll just speak to it briefly in the next slide. This is just the first part of the road rationalization is to identify which, what your road network should look like. The next step is implementing it. And then after that, it would be to present, present the findings of phase two recommendations to county council. And that's where, that's where this road rationalization process really starts to hit the road when you start to implement it. So phase two, briefly, it's just to address, you take the phase one, what those recommendations are, now how are you going to implement it? And this is just an example of options that you can say, well, we're not going to implement it. But we're going to transfer roads and structures in their current state. So if it's municipal road, it's just now a county road. If it's county road now, it's a municipal road. You can transfer it in an approved state. So if it was a county taking it, a county going to a municipality, the county would, you know, improve it to a municipal standard and transfer it or vice versa. Or you transfer the road structures with concessions where it's like, here you have the road in here, where there's some sort of financial consideration for the municipality or the county to fix that, to improve the road. But those are all part of phase two. There's more detail to that than, it's just a quick, a quick overview. And then there's also, phase two also addresses the options for staging because it's not always something you could do, to do quickly. It's prioritize it when you go through the duties, actually implement it. And now this, again, we just throw this slide at the end just to sort of bring it back to what the purpose is, is that you want to make sure your road network is serving, the county road network is serving the county and it's serving the county of services as municipalities, especially with respect to economic growth. Getting people in and out of the county, goods and services, it needs to be maintained properly. If you have a road network that's not being, it's not rationalized properly, you end up with roads that just fall into disrepair and that just hurts everyone, especially when you're trying to keep them to a county standard. So you understand that there's finite resources available for road, for road maintenance and maintaining road network. And so those have to be, it has to be focused and efficiently spent on making an appropriate road network. That's the presentation in terms of the rationalization study. If there's any questions, I'm happy to.
Thank you, David. So much information to take in from colleagues. First, comments or questions? Councilor Will.
I guess I got a comment more than a question. Very good report, appreciate it. If I understand correctly, urban centers and volume of traffic receive certain points and improve. The more the points you get, the higher the reason you have county roads. I guess part of my issue is that vehicles for the city of Stratford and the town of St. Mary's are urban centers, so therefore the points increase. The volume of traffic from both increase the need of the county roads. However, there isn't much benefit necessarily to the county. And I'm going to pick on road 139 that goes from St. Mary's to number seven. And you indicated that that was a county road required to handle the volume of traffic from St. Mary's to number seven and vice versa. And so I just want to point that out that this is a lot to do with the volume of traffic from town of St. Mary's and the city of Stratford.
Councilor Smith?
A couple of things. First one's a question, then maybe a comment question. Through you, Warden, Cal. The traffic volumes out of the 89 roads, the 89, correct?
Eighty-nine road sections.
Sections? How up to date were the traffic counts, volumes? I know you can't do a traffic count every year. For instance, yeah. My next part is about road 140, but how, how did you handle those as far as timing?
You did that, my job.
Yeah, sure.
I can answer that question through the warden. We updated all of our county road traffic volumes in 2023. We typically update them on a five-year cycle. And sometimes we've been rotating them, which roads we update each year kind of thing, splits from the dock. But because of COVID, that really affected the, our ability to collect proper traffic volumes. And so once COVID was lifted, we did the entire county road network in 2023. So our, our volumes are quite up to date. And part of this process, you know, going back a year or so ago, when we were discussing with the local municipalities, is we, we said, if you are providing, there's somebody in the road to be uploaded, to be considered for upload to the county, you're going to have to provide some updated traffic volume data and some updated asset data.
Okay, thanks. Yes, so that helps. We're not getting a traffic count from 20 years ago, so that's good. My second point is for road 140. The, I understand totally now the rationale beside it, behind it all. However, North Perth and Perth East have spent a significant amount of time and money over the last, I don't know, maybe, Councilor McDermott and Councilor Agus will help me, there's 10 years or maybe even longer, we spent a lot of money. I assumed over that length of time, I've been around a while, that eventually 140 would become a county road because of the work that's been put into it. We widened it, reconstructed it, done all the good things. Thinking that at some point, perhaps it was going to be a county road. Maybe on the other hand, we're maybe going to pave it at some time as part of our local road. But any, any further comment on rationale? Again, I understand what you've reported here, but any other thoughts on that? 140?
Through the warden, to Councilor Smith. Road 140, the capital investment that the locals have made on that road, a lot of that had to do with the cost of maintaining that road prior to it being uploaded or prior to it being improved. That road during spring broke up continuously through those sections. So through those maintenance strategies, it was identified to do some capital improvements to that road. And my understanding is while doing those improvements, rather than constructing that road back up to a township standard, it was, it was widened out of the platform and the structure was built so that eventually it could potentially support hard surfacing. But there was, to my knowledge, not an intention that once it was going to be upgraded.
Okay, thank you.
Much appreciated.
Thank you, Warden.
Thanks, Warden, Cal, through you. Thanks to our consultants for a detailed report and not only the written report, but a detailed review in person. Much appreciated. My question might be more towards the county staff. Questions about the timeline? It was mentioned that after today's meeting, this information would be circulated to the lower tiers. And then after that, the implementation portion would then commence. So what, like, how long before the lower tiers have been advised and had opportunity to comment? And how long before we get into starting implementation portion? Is that all to happen before the end of this year? Or does it spill over into next year? I was curious.
Through, through the warden, I'll maybe answer part of that question. We anticipate getting to the local municipalities within the next few months and likely a report for council in the summertime. Just looking at the feedback from the local municipalities and also whether we're going to move ahead with phase two, the implementation process. The implementation study, perhaps David could better answer that of how long a process is that? And really, when we look at actually making any, moving into some hard changes there, are we looking at, we're likely looking not just months, but a year?
Yeah, I mean, the, the report itself does not take too long. I mean, we've got, we have to gather information in terms of the conditions of the road so we can identify how those steps would happen in terms of how we want it implemented. Is it going to be improved and transferred? Or that, that section of the, that portion of the report, that phase two report, doesn't take too long. It could take a couple of months probably. But then, then the next step in how that gets implemented, rubbering the road and actually gets it, that, that could take longer. I'm not quite sure. Yeah, not going to be a couple of months, so it's going to be longer than.
Sorry, further to that through the warden. You know, when we, if we do move forward with the implementation. You know, when we, if we do move forward with the implementation study, we would, you know, that would come back to you. And that's basically where you're going to be approving whether we're moving forward with these transfers, either uploading or downloading on these roads. And as David said earlier in his presentation, they've provided these services for a number of municipalities. When you, with some of the municipalities, when you get to that implementation phase or when you find out the dollars that are involved in it, it kind of gets people a little scared. So sometimes there may be a delay in that actual getting that approved to, to actually get the rubber in.
So follow up through you, Warden. So then in that, in that implementation phase, there will have to be some kind of condition assessment on the infrastructure contemplated. There has to be some kind of condition assessment taken and some kind of valuation towards that, correct?
Through the warden, that's correct. And I know at the county and certainly the locals do have, have it as well. We update our road needs study, which is basically our pavement condition index and condition of our roadways every two years. So we do have updated condition data for our road network as well. All the bridges and culverts that are over three meter span are inspected through OSIM inspections every two years. So that's the same level as well. So we will, we'll all have fairly updated and relevant condition data if and when we do this.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions or comments, colleagues? See none. Thank you, David, for your presentation, and John and Bill for your comments. You have a motion that reads as follows: That Counselor receives the road rationalization study report. For information, move by. Counselor McKenzie, seconded by Counselor Orr. All those in favor, and that is carried. Moving on to our agenda, are there any council reports that that's staff? See none. Are there bylaws? Any counselors who'd like to give, do us a motion at this time? See none. Any other business? Any announcements? See none. We do have a closed session agenda. And the motion reads as follows: That Perth County moved into closed session at approximately ten thirteen AM in accordance with Section two thirty-nine of the Municipal Act, S.O. two thousand and one, C. twenty-five, as amended, to consider matter pertaining to labor relations, identical individual, HR, and matter pertaining to potential litigations, negotiations, a verbal report from. Move by. Counselor McDermott, seconded by Counselor Willhout. All those in favor, and that is carried. Okay, we're about back in open session. Moving on to our agenda, we do have the confirmatory bylaw. The bylaw number four zero two-two dash two zero two-five being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of Council of the Corporation of the County of Perth at its regular meeting held April third, two thousand and twenty-five, is read at first, second, and third time, and finally passed by, finally passed April third, two thousand and twenty-five. Move by Counselor Kessenberg. Seconded by Counselor Willhout. All those in favor? That is carried. And finally, that the council meeting be adjourned at approximately ten forty-one AM. Move by. Counselor McDermott, seconded by Counselor McKenzie. In favor? That is carried. Thanks, everyone. Enjoy the rest of your day.